And we did this for the court this morning. If a woman rise, we're gonna please go lay some pledges and play a little peace and case.
Please face the American flag.
United States of America.
Please face the Texas flag.
Texas flag. Indivisible.
Father, we come to you today thanking you for many blessings for us. We ask that you continue to bless and protect the health care workers, father, and first responders. As they respond to this other COVID wave. We ask that you protect our soldiers and our armed forces as they continue to evacuate Afghanistan, father. And as always, we ask that you protect this court, this county, and all the civil servants who help perform. And we ask for wisdom of this court, Father. Jesus mighty man, amen. Just for the public's information. The Austin emergency management does post the current COVID cases. As we receive them through the Department of State Health Services. So they are current and there are on the Liberty County Austin emergency management website and also the Facebook page. So if y'all can do Facebook, we y'all can look on there and all the information you need. Because everything on Facebook is true. But anyway, that we did post those if you wouldn't notice that the cases are going up. And we are having a large number of people that are passing away. So I'll just leave it at that and let your conscience be your guide and handle treatments. Okay, notices and proclamations. Please keep those folks in prayers that have loved ones that have the COVID or have passed away. Notices and proclamations, notice and proclamations today. So we do have a public comment and this morning, Bill Jordan Morton Saul is here. He's from Cleveland area and she's gonna talk to us about some things that are pertinent to her area. So this, we might have told you something this morning and it fits with some things. And thank you for coming.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for listening.
Yes ma'am.
I'm in the city of Plum Grove.
Come up a little bit closer if you would.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm a resident in city of Plum Grove. I'm property there. I own businesses and stuff. In the past four years, the city of Plum Grove has not attained or allowed for the means of repairs or replacement of roads. Or, and they've discouraged the volunteers from repairing and replacing the roads in the courts. And furthermore, has no city services. I go on to say, and I believe I've given everyone a copy of this, if anyone doesn't, just let me know. I need your copy of it. They have two miles of the Plum Grove Road right now barricaded for repairs and future repairs. And then they have the church loop shut off, which is a limited access over to FM 1010, which gets people on out to Highway 59, more than working mornings and coming home at eight minutes. So if that was set up now for a roundabout where traffic just continually flows and nobody stops, only no signs, then we can move better there. Just that there are so many people till I-99 gets put in, it's not going to really flow greatly. But that would definitely help. The safety and the emergency, I talk a lot there about the washouts and the stuff that hasn't been repaired since Hurricane Harvey, even though the city has received FEMA money and state grant money. And for two years, it's received property tax money and business, personal property tax money. So they haven't been removed, but they have spent all of their money except for what I understand, about $27,000. Other things, whether it be computers or gas or cars or whatever. And it may not have been none of those. I don't know why they sold them all. So anyway, they have installed speed bumps, $7,000 has been spent on speed bumps. And the speed bumps are so aggressive that in some places, when a small car goes past it over three miles an hour, it hits the bottom of the car and there's just a wall line going down the road where it either hit the transmission or there's something down there that's circling, leaking on a regular car. So it damages people's cars. And then the safety issue. Emergency vehicles don't have a problem crossing the speed bumps. But whenever they get a person in a vehicle on a stretcher or whatever they call that, gurney, whatever they call it. And you're laying flat, you hit that speed bump, it'd be pretty healthy then because it's gonna knock the window. And then the helicopter pad, the county road 345, hedges off access to the helicopter pad from the main part of the residence of the city of Plum Grove. In which the helicopter pad services more than just the residents of the city of Plum Grove. It also services these new areas where we have just multiple numbers of people moving in. And so they have to travel through this Plum Grove Road out to 1010 around the other end of 1010, which is only like a mile and a half. But if it's in track of time, it's just getting there. It's just stop. So anyway, the helicopter pad only has access from one side. Neither the fire department nor the helicopter pad belongs to the city of Plum Grove. The helicopter pad and the fire department are funded by FEMA volunteers and donations. And I know FEMA goes through the county and money's funneled down through that way to go through the fire department and helicopter pad also. So that is a waste of tax dollars shutting off the room to get to it. So the property value is broken less than there, and I speak about that. There's no city services, no water, no septic, no emergency services provided by the city. The damage to the property value to both real property and personal property. The property value should not increase any from the time Plum Grove Road had taken place in 2017. Can you hear me, sir?
Yes ma'am.
Because the roads have steadily deteriorated since that time. The city did pay to have dirt with some rock and place in Plum Grove Road. Although when the other cars drove past it, it became dust. And then in dry times, it would just blow away. And in wet times, when it rained, it would just force away. Partial repairs, as the terms will allow, have been made by Ridge County precinct three, county commissioner David Whitfire to Plum Grove Road. And to the only outlet going to Highway 59 through this Splinter Way. There is only one outlet going to Highway 59 on the north end because the Plum Grove Road, but from Plum Grove Road, because it's county road 345, is splendid access to every 1010. Plum Grove Road is a major repair traveling from Cleveland to Splinter Way to Heflin Crossway and I-10 and going on down to Texas City where lots of folks work. And coming back from work in Form 8, which, you know, that takes you to lots of places down there. And so it would be a great benefit to the residents and to the visitors for the Plum Grove Road to be made into a farm-to-market road. And I thank y'all very much for your consideration.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. And as always, we can't comment. But we can truly listen. Public comments. Okay, okay.
I don't know if it's public comment. I probably should have said it under notices. The county clerk's Cleveland office is closed until further notice. Any business in Cleveland that they would normally handle needs to come to Liberty. Apologize, but they're booked out with COVID and it's just, I can't do anything about it. Also officially, brands starting week. We're gonna start taking appointments. We're gonna have a dedicated terminal so people can come in and, you know, put their brand information in. It's gonna be difficult because that means that leaves us with one left to handle everything else for Liberty and Cleveland. So it's gonna be challenging, but anyway, they officially start September, September 1st. People are gonna start coming in and start renewing their brands. And that's it.
I've had a lot of people ask me about the brands because I'm still in the cattle business too. And the, now, do you want them to have a picture of their brand or their branded cattle? Or you want them to actually draw a picture of it?
We have to actually draw the brand.
Okay.
So, but I think I've got it set up so we can do it on a tablet. It'll go straight in. Everything all fits. Should work well.
Yes, okay. All right. Thank you so much. Sorry to hear about your folks who are out.
Yeah, say a prayer for Kathy and Kody. They needed it. They're very sick.
Okay. Number six, declare conflicts of interest. So if any commissioners have a conflict with any of the items on the agenda, please declare your conflicts now. If not, then we'll continue on. Anybody, I think. If they know I'm saying anything, I guess we don't. Okay, consent agenda is next. Hope you've all had the opportunity to look it over. If you have any questions, concerns, any reason to move a good item to the regular agenda, you may do so, but otherwise.
You have any additions?
I don't. Thank you.
Dwayne did. He sent me two this morning. We have two additional payments, one to CCC Black Topping for $254,725.85. And then another one to Angel Brothers for $245,082.24. And then we also have three small changes to the warrants payable list. The first one is a payment to O'Reilly that was 4471. It is now 4472. The second one is for a payment to Office Depot that went from $189 to $189.34. And the third one is a payment to Endell Mail for $99 and it is now $99.95. That's all.
You know, other additions, I'm a little bit proof of the consent agenda. Second, yeah, motion Greg to approve consent agenda. There are no further amendments to be added. We'll accept those amendments noted. Second, Bruce, all favor say aye. Likewise, no. And motion here, thank gentlemen. Number eight, the regular agenda. Mr. Bush, although he very may have good information to us about order for special election. Considered approved in 2021, 22 election judge.
It's something you do every two years for your presiding judges of Republican, 36th, and Liberty County. Democratic Party, Republican Party create this list and they submit it to the court. And the court has to adopt it or make changes if that's true. But this is just a formality. Move for your adoption. For your presiding judges, everybody, please.
Questions, discussion?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, motion Greg, you gotta say Leon to approve. All favor say aye. Motion here. Thank you, gentlemen. And thank you, Claire. Just, just out of curiosity, is there anything else concerning the special session? I know you've been in Austin for chats and do this series, not just on elections, but also on special sessions. And then concerning elections, and you anticipate that it'll be moved later in the year?
Yes, sir. I think we finally have a forum in the House. The Senate's already passed the elections bill. Now that the House is in session, we'll see what happens with the elections bill. And then once they wrap that up, they've got to start redistricting. What I'm hearing in Austin, everyone, is the primaries will be moved and your sign-up times will be moved because some people will not know what districts they live in or what position to sign up for based on their home residence. So we will be moving. We don't know a date yet.
And the anticipation of redistricting, we do have our number and total number for the cap.
91,682.
Yeah, but we don't have the numbers yet broken down by city, correct?
That is correct. Or broken increasing. The staff does have that. They did send me that number. It is, they are still working through the numbers and I think we're having our first meeting September. September the 14th, we're having our first meeting. We should have numbers by increasing before then. As soon as I get them, I will get those out to you all as well.
Okay. Thank you, Claire.
Yes, sir. I'll stick around.
All right. Next one. Number three. Considered approved the organization by commissioners court to, to, there it is, I'm sorry. I personally think some of these. Anyway, now we have to look for the order for special November election. Propositional amendments to the Texas Constitution. We always love to see those, don't we?
Yes, sir. The 87th legislature put eight propositions to the people of Texas for constitutional amendments for November. You don't need to consider, you just need to order the election. That's really the only option that you have is order the election for November. I concluded the order and you're, I put them at your desk because it dies. We'll get the propositions published in the newspaper and get this election done.
Make a motion to order special election, sir.
Yeah, motion for Bruce, second, Greg, for the special election. Any discussion? If there being none, all favor say aye. Likewise, no. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, honor.
Now, we'll get you up to three. Commissioner Wilson, considered approved the organization by commissioners court for commissioners to complete continuing education hours online as permitted by the government. A1.0025B, except for a county commissioner that their first 12-month period of the commissioners' first term. Everybody's going to distance learning because of what's going on right now. I know I had probate, my hours for probate. What, they did that over a three-day period, but it's by Zoom, which is wonderful. And, but we had to get these hours in, so what is, of course, pleasure as far as approving the organization.
Make a motion with proof.
Yeah, motion Leon to approve. I thought we were already committed to do that. Do we have to? Now, I don't, do we have to approve this? And I thought we were already approved.
Yeah, it's a, right underneath the, the new local government cover, the new legislature just came out. They, what they're requesting is that the commissioners' court approve this in a form that will have to be sent back in and Matthew will handle that for us. But we just have to approve it where we can take online courses. Everyone except for your first 12-month new commissioner. He has to, or he or she has to attend in person during their first year.
Second, Leon, the motion. Okay, say, ready to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, no. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number four, consider approved renewal of statewide automated eviction service savings grant. And it's just a renewal. I suggest that we all consider this and approve this.
I'm ready to approve. Second.
Motion, Greg, second, Bruce to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number five, Senator, County attorney Matthew Boston, consider approved resolution in support of adoption of Plum Grove Road state farm-to-market road system. I believe it speaks for itself. It's court's pleasure.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion for Bruce, second, Greg, all favor say aye. Likewise, no. Number six, permits and inspections. From Mr. Douglas. By the way, Mr. Douglas is having surgery this morning. Trying to get his back fixed a second time. And Lord knows, we want to keep him walking straight up. So if y'all would keep him in your prayers, I think he went in this morning about seven o'clock. So probably, I doubt he finished yet, but, you know, pray for David and make sure, keep him in your prayers. He'll be getting back as soon as he can, okay?
I see that we have representative from his office.
Yes.
As LJA approved and looked over these documents.
Okay. Come on, let me introduce you. Self, in a little bit. I know we still want you from, or David, we still want you from the, it's okay.
I have finally forgiven him. Hi, I'm Tara Beth Mosseas and I'm here for Mr. David Douglas today.
Okay. All right, this is considered approved by a replat for community subdivision. This replat is requested lots 1034, 1035, section two, be converted to commercial to be used for a service station strip mall. And LJA has renewed its correction.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, Bruce, second, Leon, all favor say aye. David, was that an hour or day?
You have the last person to sign it.
David.
Abstained.
Will? That's why we have the first part of the court. We have conflict, list of conflicts of interest. If you do, then tell us, you know, you're gonna have a conflict, okay? So you're understanding, right? So you have a conflict. Is that correct?
I'm abstaining, yes, sir.
Because of a conflict of interest, correct?
Yes, or Matthew posted. Yes, I have abstained.
Okay, that's all I need to hear, just, but I gotta do it correctly.
Yeah.
All right, so all in favor, three votes, one standing. And then motion does carry. Don't sit down yet, Mayor Pitt. Number seven, considering approved by a replat, Grand St. Joseph Division, this replat will take three existing residential lots, convert them to commercial to be used for a service station strip mall. Again, it's placed in the same thing. And you have LJ's recommendation later, is that clear?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve. I always like to see these lots being converted to commercial. It's telling me that we got businesses moving in.
Right. Motion, Bruce, please say. David, say with Greg. All favor say aye.
Abstained.
Likewise. David, thank you. I just need to hear it because I'm not near as deaf as Greg, but still need to hear it, okay? Read the one, all right. That does pass. Thank you, Joe.
If you would leave those up there or I will forget to sign them while we.
Number eight, Sheriff Rayder, considered, and I think Captain Knox is here today. If we have any questions we can ask him.
Yes, sir.
Consider approved the Liberty County Sheriff's Office entering into a five-year contract of local rail solutions for 60 body worn cameras and evidence management software, licensed equipment for a total cost of $349,150. Annual cost of $69,830 through the Bible Word number 568-18. Harold, can you expand on this somewhat since it's through the Bible Word?
Well, I'm just kind of aware that it's been on the agenda, but we, when they decided to give a P.O., we check with Bible Word, make sure it's on there and make sure it's right, right? So we'll get a P.O. unless it is.
So we have to still wait on P.O., correct? You don't have a P.O. yet.
No, I mean, y'all can, y'all can vote it in.
Yeah.
It is budgeted.
Probably, I don't know.
So he, so, but, yeah. If I understand correctly, we're gonna do some money that's left over from the capital outlay and then also some seizure. Okay. To get it up and running.
That's always my question is, do we have the money?
Yes, we have the money. The, that also includes, so right now, we're using the servers to store all the video footage. We're having a lot of issues. They're out of service. This new system will be cloud-based. And that also includes all of the vehicles, the interview rooms, and the cameras. So everything will be cloud-based and easier for everybody to get hold of the information.
Multiple new equipment can be transferred over to you.
Yes, it will, yes. And they're also agreed to throw in the interview room equipment into the sheriff's office as well.
All right. Make a motion to approve. Say, motion Bruce, say, Greg to approve. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Most carries. Thank you, Jim. Captain Knox, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Number nine, consider approved the Liberty County Sheriff's Office into a memorandum of understanding with Harris County Sheriff's Office for access connections to the Harris County's automated fingerprint identification system. That speaks for itself pretty well. Captain?
Yes, so what we're gonna do with this is we're gonna tie into Harris County's system. We're working on some equipment right now, portable ACs, fingerprint readers. We're working on some equipment right now, portable APIS, the fingerprint readers. So that on traffic stops, we can't get somebody, man, get their fingerprint, who can identify them. We're also looking at putting it in the machine in the jail as well. But we got some stuff to work out with some metallics first. Let's keep this, the plan's long-term. But this first part is just give demo, you sign, agree, and then order the fingerprint readers and then move on to the machine with jail at a later date.
Make a approval. Second. Motion for Greg. Second for Bruce to approve. All favors say aye. Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number ten. Consider to approve between Liberty County and PlanSource, that its administration for statement of work for open enrollment renewal services. Does this happen here, right?
Well, actually, this, since we signed up with PlanSource, this is the first time.
First time, okay.
They have asked us to sign a renewal agreement. Unfortunately, that, this has gone through some process and talking back and forth with PlanSource. But currently, they have a standard renewal, so there are no charges for the renewal, no fee for the standard renewal. And there are additional charges spelled out in the event that we have changes to carrier. But that is not currently on the table. So basically, the contract states that there will be no charges from the open enrollment. It spells out who has what responsibilities in the open enrollment process. I did send this to Mr. Post and his review.
I didn't see any problems.
Great. All right. Any further questions, discussion? Entend a motion? Motion. Greg, second, Leon to approve. All favors say aye. Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eleven, consider and approve the appointment of Kathy Warner to SD number three board for the expired term of the previous board member. And as you know, that Mr. Blot passed away earlier this year due to complications of COVID. So that seat has been opened. Passing. And it was requested that you fill the seat. Person, Ms. Warner has agreed to serve. Check and see everyone, I believe, everyone's agreed. But still, we have to do a bit of motion.
We'll make a motion to approve.
Thanks.
Second.
Motion, Leon, second for Bruce. All favors say aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twelve, Sarah Green, more of the twenty-one dash twenty-one for administrative services for the A R P Act eligible projects. Eric, you want?
Yeah.
Just a good rundown of this one?
We'll maybe still review it. The proposals are not quite ready. Probably have a meeting tomorrow. It's probably be on next agenda. We'll spend on here just in case that we're ready.
So we just need to table this?
Yeah, just table.
Make a motion to table.
Motion for Bruce, second, Greg to table. All favors say aye. Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number thirteen, Harold, consider to approve awarding bid number twenty-one dash eighteen for covers. I believe you have your sheets here to try to review and then close.
Yeah, y'all, y'all table that last time because there was a question about, I think we've been a little bit of a year. And for that was the first time they were reporting us the delivery fee. And they brought up because the precinct did order, under the minimum order, we did not have a minimum order in the original bid contract. So I asked him about that. And he said, well, there's a company called ADS Advanced Training Systems that they get this pipe from. Big nationwide company. And some of his pipes drip from their yard. And when it's under the minimum, when Sam told me what the minimum is, then they'll charge the fee. If it's over the minimum, they don't. And like then, we've never had that problem before. So we've kind of discussed that. I kind of wish, I said, trying to email it, but never could get an answer on a lot of it. Of what the minimum is, how it's gonna affect us in the future. But on, in the bid package we sent out, we put in here a prime and alternate vendor may be awarded the contract. Okay, partners be allowed to request service from the alternate. Yet for some reason, the prime cannot provide services at that time.
Didn't you also reach out for Ford Line?
Yeah. I give you all your, all your options. So you can do a prime and an alternate. But if we ever use an alternate, it's got to be a real good reason. We need it written. Something like they can't get it for months. We need, you have an emergency, a storm, a disaster, and you start having, when y'all do buy a lot of covers, then, you know, it's probably good to have an alternate in there that they can't. I got a feeling, I don't know if it's for crap, I got a feeling it's ADS is a big company. They probably get them off the same, same company or similar companies. The other alternate is, we kind of discussed, I sent a letter to Ford Line or emailed him or whatever, and told him what the deal was, that they were a low bidder. But commissioners had some concerns and I put that, you know, I don't know what y'all are gonna do. So I said, possibly they won't, y'all will not order to low bidder. So according to local government code two sixty-two, twenty-seven, I gave you a copy. It says, you cannot award it to the lowest bidder unless you give the lowest bidder, the next lowest bidder. Until you give the lowest bidder an opportunity to come before commissioners' court, provide evidence of why they're responsible and whatever else they want to say. I emailed it to them. They never got a response. And I don't know if it was anybody from Ford Line here. So I don't know what that means and why. They just don't care or whatever. He never did answer me at all. Answered it one time with a hundred and fifty delivery fee and other emails I sent him, I never heard back from him. So you can either award the Ford Line a low bidder, like M D N or covert, meaning the alternate. Or I think we've done all we need to do. You do his orders, orders covert, some of y'all.
I make a motion. We've worked with the state a little bit. I've had problems. I've had a covert order since April. Couple weeks ago, they said they couldn't deliver unless they paid a delivery fee, which is not in the bid. And we found it. And they still haven't delivered the covers. And we just had trouble with them. But we approved the second a little better.
I was thinking, but it's a pretty close.
And that would be covert supply. Yeah, there is a lot of three point three percent difference, three hundred percent difference.
Well, if they're, if they're including freight or if they're not including freight, they charge us freight for minimum bids. I mean, minimum orders. Would covers now be the lowest bidder?
Well, it would be, but like I said, we went whole year and y'all never been going to the minimum. So normally, probably all. But they should put that in their bid that we could consider when we order it here.
All right, we have a motion from Greg, second, Bruce, to award the bid to covers. Any discussion? Now, you did anything?
No, thanks, man.
All favors say aye. Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Is that it? Hopefully, we have any further.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I've got a motion from Bruce to adjourn. Second, Greg. All favors say aye. Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.